I would entertain a motion to open the Board of Selectmen's meeting for July 22, 2014.
Chairman motioned over.
Second.
Call the office, flag please. Flag to the flag. The United States of America, in your republic, which stands one nation, under thy, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I might have to leave, I don't know if we have a quorum, is that okay? Before we get to Eric and on Board and Committee reports, I would like to remind everyone here tonight, and there's a lot of people here tonight, when I was driving down High Road, and I was able to see everyone riding their bicycles and walking and look out on the farm fields of the coal bees and all the other farm fields on both sides of the roads, we live in a great town. And as we go forward tonight, that's something we always keep in mind, it's a great town that we live in. So Eric Savan, Municipal Building Committee report, please.
Good evening, Eric Savan, 14 old Farm Way, Chairman of the Municipal Building Committee. I'm here tonight to report on the Municipal Building Committee's progress to date and continue the discussion on how we can resolve the facility needs for the police station underneath us today. With that, I guess I know there's a lot on the agenda, so I'll keep it short. I have three issues. One is the issue, one is the new information, and the third is how do we get started. And I know that in talking to you about the issues, the issues haven't gone away, and in saying that some of the issues have actually become worse, I know the selectmen are aware of that, so I'm grateful for all the people in the room, I'm grateful for the people on cable TV. These issues affect you as residents, they affect me as a resident, so I'm appreciative that you hear what I have to say, and if you take it away tonight, please feel free to discuss it with anybody in town. My email is on the town website, under Boards and Committees, under Municipal Building Committee. If anybody has any interest, we welcome your input on this. So in the spring and recently, there's been sewer backups in the police station downstairs that have caused necessary cleanup and damage that would cause repairs. There's a temporary storage bin out there where some of the police station is now in a storage bin while they're doing this repair work, they're redoing floors, they're redoing walls, they're painting, and just after they almost have completed this, there was another incident this weekend that was luckily caught and could have been another sewer backup, which would have only thrown more wasted time and effort. To date, over $60,000 has been sent repairing the police station, and that doesn't include man-hours of weeks of officers' times in which they've been at a uniform and cleaning up and fixing the station. So we have new information, unfortunately, it's not printed here to give you tonight, it's in the form of a report, similar to what was issued previously, and in that report by CSS Architects, they're the consultant that has put together this information, they're experts in dealing with municipal facilities, they have experience in putting together police stations, this isn't a consultant that's taken the first shot at designing a station, they understand what the program needs are and they've put that program together. The report has looked at the operational demands and facility needs of what a building needs to provide facilities for the next 50 years. We're not looking to start off with a program that makes a fix that may come out in the works in the end, but right now, the program that we have for a police station, I guess, optimizes it in a way that the station can pass federal and state requirements. Currently, they don't, and I think that's just a basic standard that we're shooting for in terms of what we're focusing on as the police station. So with that, not to get into any more detail, so I want to stop right there and I want to give you a little architectural, I guess, experience, and the first step, the AIA has six steps to an architectural project, they've been publishing this list since 1973, and the first step is conceptual design and programming, and then the other steps go on to actually physically designing a building, and we're not in those steps, we're still in conceptual design and programming. We need to, as a group, as a committee, as a Board of Selectmen, as a town, agree on what the program is for the facility improvements at the Town Hall and at the police station, so that when we compare options and we present options, we're presenting apples to apples. We don't have some or half a police station here, or a full police station over there, and some Town Hall renovations mixed in, we have the same across the boards, and then we can make an equal assessment. That doesn't say that the program or the budget can't change, but that is, that's the way to start. Typically, all projects have scope, which is the program, they have a schedule, and they have a budget, and all three get put together, and you have a project. It's like a three-sided equal triangle, and then when one of those points moves, it affects the other two. So you can't solve for three unknowns at once, you need to solve one at a time. The first place to start is with the program. So when this report comes out, you have a copy of it, in it, it has two options, I'm not going to go into those options tonight, but I'm going to say that the programs listed for those two options, I'd like you to focus on option two, and just understanding what spaces are being proposed and where they're being proposed. In the back of that report, there are floor plans that make it easy to understand what the spaces are, and what's important here is that this isn't the final design, the report's not intended to be, hey, let's go build this, the report's intended to show you that you have a room, and that room has association, other rooms associated with it that are needed. And it may be one thing for Town Hall to try to mix planning and inspectional service departments, but it's another thing for the town, the town police station, to mix the public service entrance and somebody who's being taken in in custody. Right now, that everybody shares the same entrance, which is, well, it's unfortunate and it doesn't meet accreditation. So the intent is, we just need to understand how to go about agreeing to this program and what that program means. From that, we're working on four options. All four options include the Town Hall and a police station, whether it's renovations, whether it's additions, whether it's totally new buildings, whether it's building here, whether it's building somewhere else, and those will have square footage and costs associated with them, so that everybody can understand for what budget, what's the value and what's the benefit to that option. So we have work to do, but we have made some progress, and we definitely need the selectmen's input on the program. So when you get the report, I'd appreciate you look at that. We'd also welcome, for anybody that's, again, on cable, anybody in the audience, additional support, to people either come to meetings or to be part of the committee, you're certainly welcome. And to that end, I'd like to introduce another citizen who's on the Municipal Building Committee, Richard Ronder, to address, you know, those action items.
Thank you, everybody. Hello, I'm Richard Ronder, I'm a resident, I live on Rolfe Lane, and Eric was really being modest, because as an architect, he's put in many, many hours on this, and the committee has as well, just on behalf of the town, trying to make the place we live Just a couple questions I have, and then we can stop for now. The important thing is, is that there is a lot of information, and I would ask the Board, is there a better venue to present this, maybe a special meeting to look at this, whatever you think best to move it to the next step. The other thing is, who do we need on this for liaison? Again, you're more conversant with the committees than I am, Planning Committee, Finance, Budget, whatever other committees you need, and as Eric said, really anything you can do to encourage other citizens, such as Eric and myself, to participate, because we're really talking about the police department here that serves all of us, and there's many, many challenges that, again, the report will address. And I wanted to ask you, is that a venue to ask, how we can help you, help us all, get to the next step?
Richard, we have a person that is asked to be put on the Municipal Building Committee, and we will probably, you know, we will do that tonight, and anyone else, and also the cable television, we need some help. When we did and looked at the other municipal complex, what was the makeup of that board? Can you remember that Tracy was on it? Who was on that? Martha?
Tracy was on it, Martha was on it, Sam was on it, I was on it.
Deputy Chief Lucy.
I mean, why wouldn't we start to proceed with hopefully some more citizen input and a makeup such as that? Why wouldn't we start sooner than not with that type of makeup? Or you will, do you have a little more work to do before we do that?
No, I think we're ready, and we'd like to identify, it'd be great to identify Plum Island President, Old Town.
Yep.
And a Byfield resident.
That would be super.
That could take our lead, that we could provide information to, that could help to send that information to everybody else.
So I mean, if we can look at, and maybe Historical Commission too, but if we can take and look at some of the makeup of that past board and ask people if they would like to serve, and anyone else have any ideas on the board?
Jeff, just one thought on that, and that is that if the committee gets too big, it's hard to function, you can't find times to hold meetings and stuff, so we don't want to expand it forever. I really think we need people who aren't intimately involved in town government on the committee, because this is going to cost serious money. We've got to think about, you know, how we, given, you know, the current economic situation, and I think if we don't involve, you know, people from the larger community who aren't intimately involved with town government, I think it's going to be hard to get this project moving forward. I mean, those of us that are involved in town government, as well as some others, know that the police station is really in dire need of replacement upgrade, whatever you want to call it, but I think it's really important, and then also that one of the questions that you brought up, I think a workshop of some kind, when the committee thinks they're ready, you know, just sort of separate from a meeting or whatever, just to inform people, you know, have your project plan, you know, that even though we know they're not cast in stone, but just what these spaces are, the kinds of square footage, you and I have talked about some of this, but I think it's really going to be important, because this is a very complicated issue, you know, police station is highest priority, but it impacts Town Hall as well, so I think something like a workshop when the committee thinks they're ready would really be helpful to the community.
Eric, I think, and David, I don't know, and maybe you can articulate this, is your board or committee asking for a little more guidance on maybe picking one or two, or are you ready to try to move forward and assimilate information on the four proposals before you?
We have information that we first and foremost would like to get your input feedback on. As soon as we do that, I think we are then ready to start to introduce it to other residents, because ultimately, 90 percent of this is getting the town to understand what they don't already know, and there are some dynamics with the police station that people don't like anything to do with the police, because they have this little fear of police cars and the police. So they need help downstairs, and we need to get it out. I didn't think that was a good point, too many people is, too many, and so maybe three, and if we could figure out how to identify those people from different areas of the town, I don't think we're looking for asking for any more than three other people on the committee.
All right.
Jeff, we have three separate areas, and they are different, they have their own...
Texture, character.
Yeah, right, and I think we should have representation of Plum Island from the three sections of town, the makeup of Town Newbury, and we should try to concentrate on people that go to town meeting, and all of us, we know what we need, and we're very familiar with the projects, we've been on different committees, but the average citizen out there, they just don't know, and we've got to get the message to them, and we've got to get them to a meeting. I'd love to have one selectmen's meeting just dedicated to that.
Or at least an hour before a selectmen's meeting, we could get together.
It would be more than that, because this would be very complex.
That's an excellent point. I mean, as I talked about program, as I talked about budget, and I talked about schedule, you know, we as a committee are focused at having something, or more than something, or having a lot for the next annual Town Meeting, and we will probably need, or I'm willing to be at or have several public workshops to try to get that message out before the next Town Meeting. So we will produce a schedule.
And I think that is a good suggestion to a workshop, but I think the key is, I don't think, and again, Eric's the architect, I'm not the architect, but just in simple language, if people understand the challenge, I think, I think everyone will want it for their community.
Well, let me propose this, because we do have a public hearing, but, and you guys can shoot back what you think real quick. Steve Framm has asked to be on this committee, and I imagine he would be good, he's been on the Board of Health for a long period of time, that would be Byfield. If we could get someone from Old Town, and if we could get someone from Plum Island, I still think it's intrinsically important to have, I still think it's intrinsically important to have someone from such, the planning board, and maybe a liaison from the selectmen, at least participating in some of that initial planning, so we can bring the word back to us. Go ahead.
Steve is from Byfield, we're from Old Town, and Plum Island right now is the necessary person.
All right, then a couple, or one at least from Plum Island, and then I think we ought to set up someone liaisonal from the selectmen and the planning board, and maybe Tracy.
Finance committee.
And Finance Committee.
Yeah.
So that sounds like a good plan. Chuck, anything else? Chuck, you got anything else?
I was going to say, you know, finance and capital planning.
Yep.
There's one other thing, and this is what the people don't understand, and spending 28 years in criminal justice, I started in this police department myself. The average person does not know what the police department does, they don't know what Chief Riley does, they don't know why we need so many cruisers, and they're all necessary, okay? They don't know, we have detectives, they need a section. We have patrolmen that come and go, the patrol, we have supervisors, we have people that have to go to court, court people. They all have to have their own place in that. On top of that, we have the harbor masses that are under Chief Riley, we have...
Animal control.
Animal control. We have 10-mile radius of Seabrook Nuclear Power Plant Emergency Control Center, we're just beyond the 10-mile limit, but we've got to be able to deal with that for evacuations, okay? There's so much, even though we're a small town, we're not a small town, we have the same towns the city has, the same problems that the city has, okay? But you can't cut it short, and they need enough room to, I don't know how they ever have worked under there, I used to work down there, we were the first ones to put it down there, but it was bad then, and that was, what, 30, 40 years ago. Not much has changed, but the average person does not know, in this town, what their police department does, and I think they've got to get that message, it's very important. We just can't talk about a building, all this stuff is necessary, and we have to solve it.
I think Mike is really right, and to get this thing going, I mean, Martha, can you, at your next meeting, see if you can put someone together as a liaison, or yourself would probably be best from the planning board? Can I ask, you're already there, bang, who would like to be...
I'd be happy to be the liaison, I've been trying to get to those meetings.
Are you going to be able to make every meeting, you think?
I think so, they're early enough that I can push back work.
You know, Jeff, I'd like to fill in, but I can't be on a schedule, because I don't know what my future holds there, but I'd like to be able to just jump in when I can and just help out, and I can answer a lot of questions.
We all should.
Yeah.
Yep.
You'll have a representative from the selectmen there for sure.
Great.
All right, so we'll need one now from the Finance Committee, so Tracy...
I'll take care of that.
Yes.
All right, we do have a public...
Thank you.
Thanks, Eric.
Thank you very much, guys, for all you've put into this.
All right, we do have a public hearing. The public hearing is for a wine and beer package store licensed for Plum Crazy at 134 Northern Boulevard. I will read the legal notice. Notice is hereby given as required under Chapter 38 of the General Laws as amended, that a public hearing will be held Tuesday, July 22, 2004, at 7:15 at the Newbury Town Hall, 25 High Road, Newbury, Mass., on the application of World Spirits Inc., doing business as Plum Crazy, 134 Northern Boulevard, Newbury, Mass., for a new Section 15 package store wine and malt license. I did a little bit of research on Chapter 138, Section 15, and it seems like, you know, with us being the local licensing authority, there'll be a public hearing tonight, we can come to a conclusion at the end of the public hearing, it will go to the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission afterwards for a ruling, and then come back to us for a license being issued. So that being said, is there anyone here from Plum Crazy? All right. Welcome. Can you kind of give us an idea of what you have for a vision for the package store?
We will be selling only beer and wine.
Any questions from anyone else on our board, and then I'll open up to questions from the audience? Tracy, did you have a question? No? David, anyone? Anyone in the audience have any questions? Any observations?
Used to be a breakfast place, lunch place, still going to be?
It still is, it's still a restaurant on half of the building, the other half is a convenience store, and within that convenience store, we will be selling beer and wine, so it's not strictly a package store.
Now, can anyone at our table, or Tracy, or yourself, fill us in? Was there a package store license there before?
There was.
And that was my question. So that being said, thank you.
You're welcome.
Would we like, as a board, to think about this, or entertain a motion tonight of, what would you like to do?
Since there seems to be no concerns from the audience, I would say, since there seems to be no concerns, I'll move that we approve the request.
Second.
Second?
Yep.
Discussion by anyone here? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
We'll take the next step. We're going to go back to Board and Committee reports, and we're blessed tonight to have Channing Howard here from the Historical Commission, and actually, he would like to talk to us about a demolition delay bylaw, and they've done a lot of work on it, and it seems that they have a pretty good product.
Thank you. Channing Howard, 61 Central Street in Byfield, Chair of the Newbury Historical Commission. We have produced, after about three years of work, the final draft of the demolition delay bylaw, and we are, after it has been reviewed by all departments, committees, and we've had their input, we have created a final draft, and we will, we are here to present it to your board tonight, to ask you to, one, to put it on the Fall Town Meeting, two, to request permission to hold two public hearings this summer, one on a Wednesday and one on a Saturday, for public information, question answering, any type of workshop, any questions people have, and three, permission to release the document to the public, put it on our website, give it to the media, et cetera. So that is where we're at. The demolition delayed bylaw that we have created is almost solely formed around the state of Massachusetts, Chris Skelly and Historic State Historical Commission. I went to their seminars and meetings in at the State House and got guidance from them, we've got guidance from other towns, we've taken tidbits in from other towns, additional things, we've spent quite a long time deliberating on dates, and we have arrived at a date of 1820. The date of 1820 is the end of, it's after the first period and the end of an architectural period, the planning board had input on that, and we went forward with that date. This is a very conservative, probably the most conservative demolition delay bylaw in this area. We don't want to be restrictive, the primary concern is teardowns, preventing someone from buying a piece of property with an antique house on it solely for the purpose of tearing the house down to gain an ideal piece of property to build a new house on. So this is, this is our mission, we do not want to control how people repair their houses, change their houses, what they do with their houses. The sole, the first step here is to stop somebody from buying an antique house specifically so they can tear it down as soon as they get the permits. So that is what we have tonight.
Now, Channing, correct me if I'm wrong too, and I think you're talking about a nine-month delay, right?
Yes.
Which is basically kind of conservative, and if I understand this correctly, we received documents on the demolition delay bylaw at an earlier time, did we not?
Yes, this winter you were given, what, drafts three?
And we probably read those, but they went out to the local departments and bore, you know, and were looked at again, and some changes were made.
All the changes, we, copies went to planning, the Town Council, Building Commissioner, and your office, and I got responses back, we blended all their recommendations in, and that's what is created the final draft.
Now, here's the problem for us, and I think as a board, we need to discuss it, we have not probably seen the changes that were put into that document. He's discussed them somewhat, you're on kind of a deadline, right, if you're going to make Fall Town Meeting?
We need to make Fall Town Meeting, we need permission to go ahead with our hearings in the summer in order to get to Fall Town Meeting.
So what I'm asking the Board to entertain or think about, do we have any concerns with letting Channing have public hearings and go forward with the bylaw, even though we're not aware of some of the changes, but the changes were vetted by our local boards?
I'd like to see the bylaw.
All right, so that means...
We've got some other items, so maybe we could sort of delay our discussion, and we could get some copies made, because it's not in the materials for this evening's, at least that was in the drop box that I could find.
It was not?
Yeah, so I haven't seen the revised bylaw, I don't feel comfortable...
Do you want to table it to the next meeting?
Well, given that we're not going to be meeting for another month, and we've got a deadline, what I'm suggesting is that if we could get copies quickly, we could look them over this evening, and maybe Channing could help us see where the changes were made from the document we got some time ago, so that we would be, I would feel comfortable...
We could put it off to the end of the meeting.
That's what I'm thinking, yeah.
We'll put it off to the end of the meeting, Channing, and do the, that means you've got to stay, and we'll do it the last thing.
Get us some copies.
And get us some copies, all right?
I have copies here.
All right. All right, that taken, thank you, Channing. We have citizens' concerns, we have a letter from Ellen Daly on concerns about trash pickup on Plum Island. Is Ellen here tonight? Do you want to discuss some of that at the microphone, or do you want me to kind of, go ahead?
I have some comments as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I have some comments that I'm going to read from, just so I don't forget anything. What you are referring to, I think, is a letter that I sent to the Board of Health a few weeks ago, and I've had some...
And we're on it too.
And you're on it too, and I've had some responses from people since then, so I want to point to those once I'm done with my comments. And also, just wanted to say, before I start, that I am from Six Olga Way on Newbury, I have owned a very small piece of property out on Plum Island for about six years. I have not been involved in the Town Meetings before, and I'm not privy to some of the decisions that have been made or why they've been made, and certainly am not intending to offend anyone, I hope, with any of my comments, thoughts, or observations, this is not an indictment on anything that's been done or not been done, it's simply my adulterated observations and concerns, so I wanted to just share them as they were coming to me. So thank you for allowing me to address these issues, I believe we have the beginning of a critical situation on... like to use it. Firstly, I am becoming increasingly concerned about the garbage situation in this part of Newbury. We have a critical situation at the beach entrance on Plum Island Boulevard. Over the past few years, the increase in traffic has created a problem with the dumpster, which cannot hold the entire load of visitors to the island. This has generally proven to be adequate up until this point in time, I would say, actually this year. Of late, the situation has become unsanitary and unsafe. Increasingly, the dumpster that sits at the beach entrance on Plum Island Boulevard cannot handle even a whole weekend of visitors or a whole full week of vacationers. I have provided some pictures of the dumpster that the Plum Island Foundation has provided. I recently contacted them, and I will be meeting with them as well. They have provided that dumpster since 2011, I learned, at the cost of about $6,000. You can see from the photos that on a recent Friday and again Saturday afternoon, it was already full. In the past, I have personally put all the garbage that has been left on the top, as it always is, one side is, one side is filled, into the dumpster, pushed it down as far as I could, and closed the covers. Over the weekend before the Fourth, I went up on Sunday morning to open up the two sides that were not yet full, so that the beachgoers would throw their trash in the receptacle rather than on the top. This gave us a lot more space for the weekend's trash, but still not enough. By evening, it was chock full, the tops could not shut, and the foraging seagulls were pulling it around the parking lot. Secondly, there is also a need for the entrance itself to be cleaned up. I have been told by the Board of Health that the broken glass in the sign at the beach entrance will be replaced. I have included photos of this as well. The brace pole holding it up has snapped off, and the roof tiles have blown away in a storm. The faded and ripped notices, including a rather pathetic ribbon which reads, "Please Respect Our Beach," is the first impression off-island visitors have of the beach. It is hardly a good first impression, and certainly does not represent the manner in which we would like them to care for this beautiful place. There are downed fences and signs, and a somewhat chronic pile of beach grass and garbage in the official parking spot, the place where emergency vehicles would go if needed. We cannot expect non-locals to care if it looks like this if we don't. The beach is getting more and more crowded, as all the north shore towns around us are charging to park or go on their beaches, and monitoring the activity with lifeguards and patrols. In addition to the overflowing garbage and the lack of recycling, the privately funded dumpster is filled with alcohol bottles of all kinds. People are drinking openly on the beach, throwing their household trash in as well, and bringing their dogs to the beach. The dog feces is only sometimes retrieved. I have not seen evidence of anyone checking fishing licenses or watching for limits, sizes, or even where the fish heads and baits are left behind with the increasing number of fishermen. I have seen the police in the lot and once on the beach on the weekend, but often when I am there, our beach is not being minded. I took a Monday morning off from work and stopped into Town Hall to discuss who could help. I was told it was you and the police. I feel this is a liability for the town and for all of us who are taxpayers. The garbage, glass, and unsanitary conditions are only getting worse. The crowds are increasing, as word has gotten out that parking is cheap or free on the street, and the beach is unmonitored. I have heard people on the beach talking about these things. Parking tickets are on the rise, and the island is bulging with more visitors than it likely should be handling. I admit, as a lifelong beachgoer, I was shocked to see the lifeguards pulled a few years ago, and then the portageons, and then the garbage cans. There are more people on the beach and more people who are not in bathing suits, but whose children are. I'm not sure that they can swim or swim strongly enough to rescue a child caught in the undertow or wave action that is sometimes strong. I think we are lucky that not more situations of swimmers in trouble than there are. I fear it is maybe only a matter of time. While I appreciate the need for cutting costs, I am responsible for substantial budget and P and L in my job. I also believe that we need a longer-term plan for the island and its visitors. Newbury is not just a beach community, I know that, but it has one within its town limits. With this incredible natural resource comes specialized responsibilities. I am a former Rhode Islander, and we care for our beaches in ways that I am not seeing on Plum Island. I am happy to work with the appropriate groups using my talents and my time to find common and where possible inexpensive solutions to our challenges. I have set up a meeting with the board members of the Plum Island Foundation, which I have supported in the past, and appreciate all that they and the local Plum Island businesses have done to step in to help provide some facilities. They are very likely, there are very likely lessons, too, that we could take from the Salisbury Beach Partnership, which appears to be a successful melding of a private and public people and funding. There are many ways to address this, from installing cameras at the beach entrance to oversee trash dumpers and dog walkers, paying young people a minimum wage to patrol the beach, to more regular, maybe special duty, pay check-ins from the police, or considering charging for beach entrance or beach passes. I hope to begin a fruitful dialogue with all of you, so that we can come up with solutions even before they are needed. I thank you for the opportunity to address the board and for your dedication to this beautiful town that I have come to love. Thank you.
Ellen, I'd like to thank you for those comments. I mean, a lot of times when we get things such as this, and it involved a stressed budget that initiated some of the changes, especially with the dumpster, and I can remember when we pulled it, I mean, I'm, I'm a sportsman and a person that hikes in the woods, and when I go out in a boat, or when I go to the beach, I take my trash home.
Right.
But I can remember when I think our dumpster went away, and people still piled the trash that they had from the beach, or wherever, where the dumpster used to be.
Right.
So, I mean, there's kind of a counterculture of how a dumpster should be used in that location, too. I mean, I look at some of the bags that I see in the pictures you provided me, and I think if someone went through that, they'd probably find, you know, Maxwell House coffee cans. So it sounds like there's a lot of household trash in there.
There is, yep.
So I encourage anyone that lives on the island and they have a camera to take a picture. But I am not at all minimizing some of the concerns you had. I think they're great. And I think you've got the energy, and maybe it's time that some of these things are readdressed. I mean, there is plans somewhere on the back boiler for Olga Way to become a parking lot. And to become a parking lot that charges fees for people to park. Now, it'll be some of the decisions of the town as to whether they want those revenues to maybe go to sand for emergencies, or whether they want to go to maybe putting lifeguards back on duty and reformulating some of the ways we look at maintaining the beach itself. So I'll ask for any other comments from the board.
I guess I'd like to get the police department's take on this situation, both the safety issues as well as the trash issues.
The safety issues are a real concern. Lifeguards, funding for lifeguards was eliminated five or six years ago. And, you know, we have usually two cruisers on, on a shift, one east side, one west side. And if my cruiser is down at the boat ramp dealing with an issue, and there's a water emergency at Plum Island, you know, it's travel time from there. Luckily for us, we have a good fire department, and Newbury Port helps us out on the island when we can, as we do with the Newbury Port under the island. We help them when we can. So it's a difficult situation, and, you know, at this point, we don't have the funding for lifeguards. It's not in the budget. I'd like to see it come back at some point, but that's up to the will of the town.
And I guess on the trash issue, we can't exactly afford to have an officer standing guard over the dumpster.
That's the thing. I mean, obviously, littering's a law, and it's a fine, and we have cited people for littering, but, you know, it's a difficult situation unless we're sitting there. And, you know, when we had the lifeguards, the lifeguards were very good at telling people, remove your trash, and, you know, use the barrels, do this. They were very good at calling us when there was public drinking on the beach. You know, when I have one cruiser on the east side, I can't let him out of the cruiser to walk down, you know, four mile stretch of beach. You know, he has to get back to his car if there's an emergency. So, you know, enforcement out there is difficult at best. Sometimes we'll take the ATV and we'll go out and we'll patrol. It's very sporadic, but we do do that. I like to try to keep the people that are drinking on the beach out on their toes, but it doesn't happen as often as it should.
Yeah, I just know from my own experience, having lived in this area for 35 years, the trash issue comes and goes, almost like the tide does, just on a longer time scale.
Yeah, I think, for me, I think a lot of it, and thank you, because I feel for you guys, I think a lot of it is the sort of, the word is getting out that it's unmonitored as often as it is. I mean, I've had people walk up at 10:30 in the morning while I'm there in the parking lot and throw their trash in the dumpster from their house. There are people, I used to think people were doing it at night. They're now doing it in the middle of the day. They're bringing their dogs down in the morning. One woman, I said very nicely, you know, the dogs aren't allowed on the beach in the summertime. She said, that's really none of your business, with the bylaws listed right there. So people know that no one's going to do anything, sort of, and I don't want to call the police for these kinds of things, because they have more important things to do. So this is why I think if we start thinking about how can we get at least, I think people watching what's going on keep people honest, and so that helps. And the lifeguards used to fill that role, and now, as I said, in the beaches in Rhode Island where I grew up, they have young people who come and they check for passes, and they can call and get support if they need it. But we're very lucky. I think for the most part, people are behaving. For the most part, you know, even when they are drinking, they're not causing trouble. But to me, it feels like it's a matter of time. It's sort of, it's getting busier, there's a lot of parking tickets going on. I hear people, overhear them on the beach saying, you know, you can park for free and there's nobody watching, and so, you know, it's only to me a matter of time. That's why I wanted to speak to you now and not two years from now, when I feel we have problems that we're behind rather than in front of.
No, I think there's good points, and before I recognize the audience, I definitely will. Tracy or Mike, can you remember what the budget was for the lifeguards? Was it 50 grand?
Right around 50, 40, 50.
And it was 50 grand for July and August?
It was for the season, and the season went from Memorial Day to Labor Day. We'd staff it daily and then weekends.
So now, we have an idea, and of course, when budget shortfalls were so intense, those were the first, some of the things. Yes?
I'd like to address that as well. I live on Plum Island.
You can come up to the microphone for us, please?
Yeah, thanks, Chuck.
Sure. My name is Karen Cashman. I live on Plum Island. There's been a tremendous amount of traffic on Plum Island these last couple of years. It has accelerated. I believe it's because of the economy. What I have noticed is I don't think people are taking the long beach vacations or out-of-state vacations that they used to take. I think what people are doing are doing day trips, maybe weekend trips or whatever, and they're coming to the beach, which is fine. Everybody loves the beach. What I've noticed is, I watched, two weekends ago, I watched a group of probably 15 young people. I don't know how old they are. To me, everybody is young. But they look to be in their early twenties. They could have been younger. Playing drinking game, 15 of them now. I was with my son and his girlfriend, who are much older than their twenties, and my grandson. And then they were jumping in, into the water, diving into the water. And like she said, it's only a matter of time. I've always believed in preventative maintenance, and I think that this is a tragedy waiting to happen. I've seen a lot of tragedies over the years on Plum Island. I really do not want to see any more. I saw another near tragedy of two young men that were with another group the weekend before that. They're two blowups that I saw that Walmart sells for like $12. And they just kept drifting out and drifting out and drifting out, past the boats. I didn't have my cellphone with me. We looked around, we found somebody that had a cellphone that called 911. They were headed towards the jetty, the South Jetty. Now, my fear was, once they hit past that, they were into a current that was going to take them right out, and it would have been a tragedy. I know that it costs a lot of money, and I know all of these things are budget problems. However, the police ended up coming down. They sent probably an ambulance and a fire truck. I don't know. I was still on the beach. And the jokers, two young guys, thought it was a big joke. And they came walking back, the police did call them, back to the beach. But this is like, there's no, it's like leaving your 15-year-old kid home for the weekend, and the house is open, and it's potty time. And this is what's going on on the island. I'm all for people having a good time, but there's no monitoring, and the dogs, you know. I don't want to, I go walking all year long, except for the very cold winter months. I don't want to be stepping in somebody else's mess that they didn't pick up. The parking, it's become dangerous. I came up to the end of the street to go onto Northern Boulevard one day. Now, this is particularly hard for me to deal with, but that is exactly where my brother was hit back in 1955, and he was never the same again. He was, he was rendered a vegetable. There were parkers right to my left in the property. There were parkers right to my right in the property. First, I'm going to be looking to my left, because that's the first car that's going to hit me when I'm coming out into traffic. I started to ease out a little bit, and some woman on a bicycle came on the sidewalk and was screaming at me and swearing at me. And I was just easing out, because I couldn't see. It's become unbelievable. Nobody knows unless they live there. I think it's, we need more responsibility. I think we need, and the police can't do it all. They can't monitor the beach. It's become a safety hazard, being on the island. And if I ever pulled out and hit another child or another car, I don't think I could ever live with myself. So I speak from experience and what I've seen over the many years on Plum Island, that it's a wonderful place to be, but something's got to give. And I understand it's all got to do with budgets, and I know that you can't hire more police officers. But I don't want to see police cars and ambulances and fire trucks coming down, because you've got a couple of jerks that have drank or smoked whatever they've smoked down there and thought it was a big joke.
Well, let's say this. I can concur with what's been said. You're going to work, you know, through certain venues. We're already getting towards the end of July, but some of these issues will certainly be addressed towards the end of this year and the next year. And I do want everyone to realize, and I think the selectmen have a copy of it now, we do have a parking survey. And that parking survey is going to be the ability for Mike to know where things should be and not be, and a lot of other people to know where things should be and not be. And when the parking survey does come out, and listening to concerns like this, and we start to enforce some of that, I mean, there's going to be people that don't want what you're asking for.
Yeah.
So it's not an easy fix. I mean, you two folks up there have done a really good job of articulating it. There are a lot of concurrent variables, because it's a place where a lot of people live also, and they want to park their cars there. So, I mean, there's, it's a complicated issue, and I think you're working forward.
I'll go on to the fact that I'm saying I'm not in favor of parking necessarily. I think there's other ways to raise.
Well, I think you're going to find that if you take parking away from where you're talking about having parking that is a hazard, you're going to have to provide some other parking. So, that being said, it's a long meeting. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I think there's another person who'd like to speak.
Oh, wait a minute. Mike would like to say something, and then I guess there was someone for us from the audience.
Tracy Naff, I live on Plum Island also. I just was wondering, I've seen a lot of private citizens now allow cars to park in their front yard and charge a nominal fee. So there's some, so I didn't know if that was allowed, because you'll see some houses have like 10, 20 cars in their front yard, and that's really increasing all the people out on Northern Boulevard and really bringing a lot of people here. So I just have always wondered if that was allowed.
Can you answer that one, Mike?
From the police perspective, if the resident has a proper parking permit, they can park on Northern Boulevard on the beach side. If they allow people to park in their driveway, that's more of a zoning and a code enforcement that really I have no control over at this point. One of the other things with parking, I just wanted, we write a lot of parking tickets down on the beach. We tow a lot of cars that are deemed hazards. The problem is our parking fines. When we write tickets, a lot of people have told our officers, at $20, it's still cheaper than parking most beaches. So we might want to consider, we might want to consider raising the fines at some town meeting. So that's just my perspective.
Mike, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Where do you write most of your parking tickets?
Plum Island Center, Northern Boulevard.
No, I mean Plum Island, Plum Island, Plum Island, Plum Island.
Yep.
Yep, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ellen. Oh, Michael, yes.
Can we just go to the basic?
Hold on, folks. Mike would like to speak real quick.
This started being a trash problem, and I think probably what we should do is forward this to the Board of Health, and maybe they should prepare an article for the town meeting warrant to cover all the costs. This started being a trash problem, and I think probably what we should do is forward this to the Board of Health, and maybe they should prepare an article for the town meeting warrant to cover all the costs for the John's and the trash for season on Plum Island for the oncoming year.
Well, Tracy, I don't know if it's in your report or not, and you're right on, Mike. You had already done some of this, right?
Yeah.
Is it in your report? You were going to tell us anyway?
I can discuss it with you, sure. That's a good segue right into it. The Board of Health has viewed this, I believe they discussed it at their meeting last Tuesday, and they will be sending out correspondence to the Plum Island Foundation on this issue. However, I couldn't find any record, and I had asked Kathy too, about any permissions being granted to put this on town property either. So we've got to do some more research. I don't know the history of it. I think all of these cuts were made prior to my administration here. So we have been actively engaged with the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission for more than a year now, or just about a year, to address traffic and parking issues on the entire Newbury portion of the island. You have a preliminary draft before you, and there'll be more information coming. As the chairman mentioned, we're concerned about eliminating parking in some areas without providing an alternative. So the Conservation Commission is engaged in it. Doug Parker's working with DEP. It is all in the works. It's just, I guess, not moving quickly enough.
Tracy, I guess the point I'm trying to make is, we have these needs, trash, parking, everything that's being considered. We know what has to be done, and we can prepare articles for the town meeting, but we need support from our townspeople to come to town meeting and to vote for the bylaws and for the amounts of money that we need for lifeguards, for the trash, you know. We could set it all up, but if town meeting votes it down, we can't fund it.
And that's a situation we found ourselves in.
And that's what's happening.
It's easy to identify the amounts needed. The hard part is, we don't have the resources. If you remember, we've...
You can't ignore it and walk out of town meeting. You've got to come before the town meeting and support your article. And we all, I mean, we all, all of us up here, know we need that.
Right. And we, again, prior to when I came on board, you had reduced public safety services by over 25 percent. You reduced your DPW personnel. So all of these cuts were a necessity. At this point, we don't have the resources to fund many of these things, that we'd like to be able to provide these services, but we don't have the resources. We've tried the overrides, they've failed. So unless you want to cut other services to provide these...
This is what, we've got a private foundation providing the dumpster.
Right, right.
And we should, I think the town should be providing the dumpster.
I don't disagree.
And the only other thing, though, Mike, somehow, when we provide that dumpster, or the Plum Island Foundation provides that dumpster, I know I have a business location, and I have a dumpster there. I don't know how people find it to put trash in it. I hide the dumpster. I've just, you know, when we decide, thank gosh, the Plum Island Foundation has stepped up. When the town does, if we do, if the residents decide, somehow, we're going to have to solve the problem of why people from, I'm not going to say a town, and people that are residents are dumping household trash in the dumpster. It doesn't make any sense to provide the dumpster for people to dump their household trash in it. So that's just for me, it's just for me anyway.
I couldn't agree more with you. My company did rubbish pickup for six years on Plum Island. You'd increase the size of the dumpster, it'd fill it up. You increase the number of days you pick it up, it'd fill it up even quicker. So it's a very, very difficult situation to get out of.
But, you know, I'm glad Alan brought some of this forward. I think it has merit, and we're going to get moving along, but go ahead, one last.
Make whatever you choose to do self-funding, and then you have a much better shot of getting it accomplished. For instance, if you have a parking issue, charge more for parking. If you have a dump issue, make one of those things like you put in a quarter to get a newspaper, so you have to put in a quarter to dump your trash. People, if you're paying for it, won't do it if they think it's going to be free. They're more likely to do it. But everything that's going on is self-funded.
Not bad, not bad. All right. Tracy, do you have more on your report, obviously?
Yeah, I just wanted to update you. During the period of July 17 through the 19th, there have been four reported fox attacks in the Marsh Ave, Newbury Neck Road area. I just wanted to keep you posted on that. The testing performed at the state lab has confirmed that it is rabies. They do have rabies. The ACO and the police department are working with the Board of Health to identify the source and take corrective actions if necessary. The police department did issue a code red announcement, and we've got additional information on the town's website. And the animal control officer has advised the following for any residents in that vicinity: keeping pets inside, supervising young children outdoors, reporting any wildlife that appear sick, taking down bird feeders, keeping garbage tightly secured, obviously not approaching wildlife or any stray animals, and immediately reporting any bites, any animal bites. So be on the lookout for that. More to follow. Data collection is ongoing by Patriot Properties, and we expect them to be here through the end of July. So they are out in the field. They carry all the proper identification, but if anyone has any questions, if they're in their area, feel free to call the assessor's office. We received great news from MIA, the Massachusetts Interlocal Association, our insurance carrier. Through the efforts of Ellen Jamison, we have received another credit. The town earned a credit of $3,700 this year for the training seminars that we run and the actions that we've taken to avoid any insurance claims. The special town meeting date, I'm going to ask you to set that date. I've contacted Christopher Armstrong, Judge Armstrong, and he is indeed available on October 21st, which is the third Tuesday in October. So I don't know if you want to make a motion to vote that to be the date for our town meeting?
I would entertain a motion for that.
Motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And an update on the pumper. We're progressing with the replacement. We have, I've secured the financing, so that's all in place and ready to go. And the contract documents are before Town Council right now, being reviewed. I'll be meeting with her tomorrow, and hopefully we'll get that signed and sent off. And I also heard excellent news from Protection Two, that they have been awarded a grant of over $250,000 to replace their tanker, which is wonderful news, because everything that, those types of grant opportunities that they take advantage of is that much less that we'll have to fund from our stabilization fund. And I understand from Doug Parker that it was an extremely competitive grant round, so that was great news.
Good for them.
Congratulations. And the only other thing I have on my agenda is that I'm very excited to welcome Eileen DeVoe as our new town accountant. I know some of you have already met her. She began her employment on July 1st, so feel free to stop in and introduce yourself if you haven't met her yet. Okay?
Thank you, Tracy.
Under new business, the selectmen seem to be the special permit grantor, so for solar arrays. And I think Martha, you're here to distribute some plans to us, and there's some other people in the room to have a presentation. Is that what we have in front of us?
Yes.
Yep. So I imagine most of the folks are here for that, so... This is for the two locations, right, guys?
Yep.
Good.
Where should I set this up? Where should I set this?
That's good, good. And we'll turn it so you can see. As the presentation goes on, folks, we'll have a chance for everyone to ask their questions. You can raise your hands and come up to the microphone, and we'll get as much answered tonight as we can.
Okay. I'll try to be quick and go through the two sites. And we're here, like you said, with two projects for large-scale ground-mounted solar arrays that are 10 acres or more in size. The first one I'll go through is the Yes Air site, which is 136 Main Street. And site is located on Main Street. It will encompass four parcels. This parcel owned by Ruth Yes Air. This one's owned by Ruth, and this parcel's owned by Ruth. This one's owned by KB Yes Air. Site is adjacent to North Main Street, 40th Drive, Route 95. What I've outlined here in red is the extent of the property lines, and then the green line is the wetland line, which we are voiding with locating our array.
How many acres do, can you off the top of your head?
Yep. This site is 93 acres with all the parcels.
Okay.
The next plan I have for you shows the actual solar array located on the site. It will sit in this back portion of the property, and be, the area within the fence in this solar array encompasses approximately 11 acres. This site will be 2.8 megawatts. That will, there will be 90,000, 9,000 modules on this site. And what you can see on this, in the plan that you'll get, is these triangles, and these rectangles are actually five by six. There'll be 30 modules per each rectangle. And I have a picture for you, helps you picture what this is going to look like. And the plan I'm giving you there, it's, that's, those four-foot-high racks, I mean, four module-high racks are five by six foot wide, but we had a 20-degree tilt. So the top of the array, the top of the rack will be approximately 11 feet, and the lower end will be 30 inches off the ground. These will be mounted to the ground. There'll be a racking system that'll be mounted to the ground by screws. It's a screw pile system where they screw into the ground, and then they'll be mounted on that. This site here, there'll be two inverters, which take the DC power created by the modules and invert it and convert it to AC power. And that, these will run to an electric line here, then to above-ground power poles here, and then to the existing utility easement here and connect in with the power at this The entire site will be, where the array is, will be enclosed by a fence that's six foot high with a one-foot barbed wire at the top. We intend to leave it six inches above the ground to allow wildlife to move through the site. Site will be accessed from Main Street, the existing driveway, to a new gravel drive, which follows an existing path used for this field, to some park paths used by the owners to gain access to the property. This is going to be a 12-foot-wide gravel access to the property. The only lighting on this site will be provided at the equipment pad areas here and here. And those, the lighting for the site is, there's downward-facing floodlight that's motion sensing, and it's really just for security. So they're really never on. For this project, we are working with CONCOM right now. We have a notice of intent, and we've gone to the initial meeting, and they are reviewing our plans as far as wetland impacts and stormwater, to see that they comply with all the town regulations. So they've seen this, and we are actually looking to schedule a site walk with Conservation Commission and hopefully the Board of Selectmen in the next couple, few weeks. We'd like to do that all at the same time, hopefully, for both sites. And that's an overall picture for this site. I don't know if you have any specific questions for this site, or I'll move on to the next site.
Doug had mentioned, I spoke about this with Doug earlier, and he'd mentioned something about fire access. I don't know if that was for this site or the other site.
It could be both, but I think we'll have to bring this to the fire department, make sure they're okay with the access that we're providing. Yep.
All right. Just wanted to make sure that concern...
Intend to do that with both sites.
Got into you guys.
Yep.
Just a quick question. I know we'll get into the details when we start having the public hearings, but one concern is, is this visible from any of the abutting residential properties or from the interstate highway?
There's a pretty big buffer here. We've got about 450 feet to the interstate. And then to this property, you've got to the property line from the edge of where the trees will be cleared, is probably 150 feet. And then we've got probably another 150 feet to the residence. So you've probably got a 300-foot tree buffer. So it's a pretty extensive buffer. When I was out walking in early spring, I couldn't see any houses. I wasn't trying to look for them, but they weren't visible.
Is most of the trees in that area softwood, then?
Uh, yeah, I think they are. Yeah.
So officially, our job is to, this evening, is just to accept the application, and then we have to start scheduling the hearings. Martha, I forgot the bylaw. What's our, sort of our timeframe for this process?
I actually don't remember, but I think we did, so I think we can set the public hearing for the next meeting, the August meeting. That would be within the time period.
But I mean, David's asking, we have so many days to kind of complete this, like 120 or whatever it is. Yeah, yeah, all right, that's fine. We'll get to that. Do you want to go to Middle Road?
Yep, sure.
And at the end of this, I know some folks here want to speak to this, and when you do, if you don't mind, reference the project you're talking about, so we kind of understand where your concerns are, or maybe where your, you know, applause are.
Okay, this is the Middle Road project. The property's owned by NA Nichols Realty Company, Inc., and it's on two parcels. This parcel here, and then a back parcel, which is separated by the electric easement. We have Route 1 here, Middle Road, High Field Road, and then the access easement. This parcel, both parcels together combined is 87 acres. And this parcel is zoned light, light business, business, light industrial, sorry. And there's some overlay district associated with this. It's in the water supply protection district, the adult entertainment district, the wireless communication district, and the flood hazard zone. Now this, looking at the layout of the project, this once again was laid out to avoid impacting the wetlands. And that creates three separate array areas. We have this area 1, which will be accessed off Route 1. Then we have an area 2, Array 2, which will be accessed by an existing gravel entrance here to an existing, there's a roadway to the back of this property. And this Array 2 will be in this location. Array 3 is over here in the existing Hayfield. This is pretty much a fully cleared area here. This will be accessed via the utility easement to a gravel drive here. This project within the array that exists inside the fence will be approximately 10 acres. There'll be 7,700 modules in this location. There'll be seven thousand seven hundred modules in this location, producing two point four kilowatts. And it'll be the same racking system that I showed you. It'll be five-high by six-feet-wide, at a twenty-degree tilt, with the same heights.
You mean megawatts, not kilowatts, right?
Megawatts, sorry, two point four megawatts. This project will have three inverter locations, here, here, and here. The, they will combine to make a connection in this location on the utility easement. This will also have the six-foot-high fence with the one-foot of barb at the top and the six inches, six inches above the ground for wildlife to move through. And we're all, we've also submitted a full notice of intent application to CONCOM for this one, and Doug's reviewing that also. And that's an overview of this site. If you have any specific questions on this site.
Any questions from the board?
I've got sort of a question that applies to both sites. Some residents have expressed concern about noise from the inverters. I presume you've got to meet the state guidelines at ten dB above ambient?
And we've moved them to the interior portions.
Right. And obviously, I haven't had a chance to look at your application or anything, but do you have an acoustic consultant on board just to make sure that you're gonna meet the standards?
We don't have an acoustic consultant, but we can get information regarding how much noise they make.
Yeah. I tend to work in acoustics, that's why I'm asking the question.
That's where his double PhD is. I will entertain some questions from the audience. This is gonna be a long process, meaning the permit process itself. So, tonight, you know, kind of keep it to some of the concerns that maybe are at a macro level. And as the process goes on, certainly, you folks will come and be aware of the process, I hope. So, would anyone like to speak, Marlene?
I, Marlene Schrader, One Anchor Way, Newbury.
Which, which project, Marlene? Or both?
The Middle Road Project. Last week, I attended the select, the Conservation Commission hearing on that. And the chairman pointed out that the FEMA regulations for the hundred-year floodline changed. And I'm wondering if the new plans do reflect the, the changes in the elevations there. I know that Doug mentioned it to them.
I mean, I think when a question like that gets asked, it's gonna be good for you guys to know what will be coming. And Marlene, that'll be duly noted, and I don't know if we're gonna get an answer for you tonight, but I mean, those are the things that we'll be looking into, and thanks. Yep, oh absolutely, yep. Great. Anyone else? Yes. State your name, absolutely, and what project, please.
Lon Hawkmeister, Old Town. I've got a question, my, my concern on the-
Lon, are you, are you the king?
My concern, my, my concern is, is the hydrology on the site. Do you know how many acres of trees are being cut, are being removed?
It's between approximately sixteen-
Sixteen acres. And I was wondering if, if, my, my concern there is, you know, the, the, the water, I, I don't know what the topography or anything looks like. I just, I just read about it, I went on Google, I looked at the site, I saw some mountains in there. It looks like some stuff ponds, but there's probably a flow across the site. And I'd be concerned with what, water piling up on this side killing the woods and, and water disappearing from this side killing the woods. And I was wondering if you, just even a simple hydrology study to look at the flow. You've got it? Oh, good, okay, so we'll see that in the workshop or something like that.
This is, uh, this is the stormwater report, that, that, on each project, so-
There is one?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
How do I get a copy of that?
I mean, we, we can get you a copy for review, and this will be probably CONCOM issues, I would expect. And, you know, that's, it'll be fully vetted, trust me.
There's a follow-up of that, we could get, if we could get PDFs of the reports, we could post them.
Yeah, good.
So people could go online and look at it.
Any other folks who would like to speak? Then seeing no one else in the audience that would like to speak, I'd like to thank you guys for
Presentation.
Presentation, and certainly giving us the materials, yes.
Do we need to make a-
We have to accept the application and set the-
All right, are we gonna accept it tonight? All right, all right.
So, I'll entertain a motion, go ahead.
I move that we accept the application.
I'll second that.
All those in favor, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, David, you want to propose a date?
Yeah.
Next meeting?
August twenty-sixth, that, should we say seven-thirty, just because we always seem to have a little, our time getting some, dealing with fifteen minutes, so rather than seven-fifteen, which has been our custom, let's go for seven-thirty, if that's okay with everyone.
Could you hear that, Chuck, everyone?
No, I didn't.
Yeah, so I, I move that we hold the public hearing at our, our next regular selectments meeting, which is August twenty-sixth at seven PM.
Seven-thirty.
Sorry, seven-thirty PM.
Do I have a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Certainly.
Massachusetts has a great solar environment. One critical aspect to this project is our ability to qualify for the state's SREC program, Solar Renewable Energy Credit Program. And August thirtieth is an important date for us. The next available opportunity in the, in the last, between now and 2016, to apply for this project to get into that program is, will be on August thirtieth. And you do need your local permits in order to be able to apply. So, there's only the one public meeting between now and then. So, we've tried really hard to put a thoughtful proposal together, work within your solar bylaw. We recognize it's maybe the first project, first two projects to go through that bylaw, is that right? So, it may be a stretch, but, you know, anything we can do to, to help make this a smooth process, we really want to get it into that program because it, it literally can affect the feasibility of the project without that incentive program, so, thank you.
I'm pondering over the fact that that's gonna be an awful lot to get done that quick.
That's their problem, not our problem.
All right, all right. Under new business, we have to sign a warrant for our state primary. In the name of the Commonwealth, you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of said city and town that you are qualified to vote in the primaries at precinct one and precinct two. And it's gonna be a primary for the senate, the governor, right down through, it seems. It seems to be a pretty stacked, it'll be a lot of people. You've got the Attorney General, Secretary of State, Treasurer, Senator, and co, I mean, so it's a very big, big, big time to vote. So, do we have to take and make a motion or anything on that one, Tracy? Or just sign a warrant?
Just sign it?
Just sign the warrant, all right.
Never had to do it before, but that's all right.
Can I do it at the end of the meeting?
Yeah, we'll get it to us. We have a new, Michael, what? All right?
No, I just, I need a minute.
Oh, new business license for Henrika, is she here tonight? I'm gonna crucify your last name, Criff, at Ocean Haircut at twelve forty-nine Street. So, yes. You want to tell us a little bit about it? And it's, it's on the island?
Yeah, I'm living on Plum Island, yeah. Okay. So, I want to introduce myself, I'm Heni, Henrika Criff.
Criff, okay.
I'm living on Plum Island for six, seven months now with my husband, last.
Great, yeah.
And we're gonna stay here for a long time, I hope, a few years. And I had my own business in the Netherlands for five years, my own hairdress salon, and also mobile. And so, I have experience for thirty-five years, that's a long time. So, and I missed my job because my husband is working, and I'm sitting all alone at home, and I want to be between the people, and I want to experience and do my job again. So, the meaning of my intention is to go like a mobile hairdresser, to go to the homes, to the people's homes, especially for old people, they can walk and maybe invalid. So, it's easy to go to their places to do the hairs. And, yeah, well, we'll see, I, I want to do it.
I mean, that sounds kind of interesting, so you're not gonna be doing it in your house, but you're gonna be going to other locations and working with people?
Most of the time, I'm gonna be out to the people's homes, and I have a special place in the house. It's very small, but only for myself, I want to work alone. And maybe the people in the street, they can come over to my place, have a lot of parking place. But the most of the time, I'm gonna be out to the people's homes.
Anything else, guys, from the board? Other, Kathy, does she have to go?
Give you a motion to approve first.
Second.
All right, discussion?
My only concern is that the site in the house is up to code and standard as far as, you know, access and things like that that are required. And I think Sam could probably speak to that, but that's my, the only hesitation that I have.
Sam with a hair salon or anything?
Yeah, the in-home operation, we do have zoning requirements as well as building code requirements. I'm sure you're aware there's health, health requirements as well as far as maintenance of their equipment. With a small operation like that, most likely would fit in our in-home occupation, where, you know, if they had onsite parking, the other issue comes down to accessibility. And I think, where she's willing to go to a person's site, we can probably get by those issues pretty easily. That she's, seems very accommodating as far as leaving the, the job site, so. There's certainly some applications that should be made with the town as far as permitting goes, beyond the license, but I, I don't think there are insurmountable hurdles.
So, so her next step should be maybe your office and then Board of Health before she comes back to us? All right?
But, you know, I have no problem with the license being issued with a contingency that, you know, proper permits are given.
Right. So, the next step for you is to, to go to that office and Board of Health?
Jeff, we could approve the business license contingent on getting all the appropriate permits tonight.
You want to make that in the form of a motion?
Yeah, I have a motion on the table right now, seconded, and I will amend that to what Sam said.
Oh, to what David just said?
Yes.
Yep. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, you're on your way. Oh, look at this.
All right, we have a business renewal for the blue. We have a business renewal for the blue from Julian Gagger for a, for the inn on the beach, so. I was gonna say, he's for the parking lot, right? Yeah, for the actual parking lot at eleven Fortum Way? So, I have to ask a question, he's a business license for the parking lot?
Yes.
Yep. All right. Wow, wow. All right, so the parking lot at eleven Fortum Way, which expires on twelve thirty-one, two thousand and four, is what we have in front of us, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
We, we have a request for a late commercial clamming license from Benjamin Stickney. This young man is a mason, I'll read his letter very quickly, and you can see his application permit before you, and then I'll ask for the will of the board. "I am a full-time mason, I have days off due to rain and cold weather in winter months. I have a young son, and I'm looking to make some extra money on days when I'm able to do masonry work."
Yeah, Ben Stickney, along Fruit Street. And, yeah, I'm just looking, you know, on cold days, and I can't do my regular job, whatever. I have some locals that live around me that said they're willing to take me out and get me going on it. It's not gonna be an everyday thing, you know, like you say, just here and there to get a little income.
Kathy, you don't have any complications with any of the, you know, regulations in place?
No, he'll have to obtain a state license.
Yep.
Yeah, they told me that.
But he didn't want to put the money out for that until he-
Yeah, they told me to wait.
Sure, so I'll entertain a motion of the board?
Motion to approve the license?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Is Kelly here tonight? We have a, we have a point on the agenda for someone that was going to speak about the parking questions for Plum Crazy. No one is here to speak? Okay. Oh, she did?
Ah, there we go.
I'm, I'm not Kelly, I'll clarify. Kelly does work with us at Plum Crazy.
Okay.
So, is there something that I can?
I don't, I don't know why it was put on the agenda, do you, Kathy?
She sent me an email and asked to be put on the agenda to talk about the parking situation. Yeah, we just wanted to, I think she just-
The permitted parking is right in front of the store, we were wondering if we could change it over. It's open parking or two-hour parking, so that parking's a huge problem for us.
Can you say that again a little louder, we couldn't hear you?
Right. I believe it's both sides of Plum Crazy, it's permitted parking only on the street, and we were wondering if there was any way to get a change to a two-hour parking, or anything rather than permitted.
Because we, it's a restaurant.
We don't have, we can only park about six cars. And the street parking would be huge to us.
I'll entertain maybe a motion for discussion, but I think we don't need a motion just to discuss this, Chuck.
Yeah, I think this feeds into the whole study-
And that's where I was gonna go with this. I mean, and, and that's kind of maybe coming up, so why don't we wait a while till we push a little bit further, and we'll maybe be able to answer some of those concerns?
Okay.
All right, thanks.
We can do it later tonight, you're gonna talk about it?
No, no.
No, you're talking about the, the parking, what you said we were talking about earlier tonight, correct?
The parking study.
Yeah.
Greg, you're here, right? Where are you? The Beach Comer has a request for unamped music that was tabled, it's before us again for four to seven PM. Did you get a request into us written, a little better than the last one? But that's okay, go ahead.
Well, it's, let me get back to the, the beach. We recently have a, it's on order, but we have a defibrillator coming to the Beach Comer, so if anything does happen at the center, before police or ambulance, they can go to the Beach Comer and grab the defibrillator.
Okay.
As far as a new, a new one, it's been kind of pretty straightforward. We're looking for four to seven on Sunday, amped. We would like to have a decimal reader outside the building, have the music on, see what's, what's respectable to all to have the music. You know, I, it's a four to seven on a Sunday. It's, like I say, if we had some kind of a decimal reader or some kind of a, come down, check it out sometime for yourself to see what's really going on, or- what's really going on or, it's really nothing. It's, I shouldn't say nothing. It's it's four to seven on a Sunday is what we're looking for. You know, occasional, if we can, you know, have something on the weekend, on a Friday, Saturday night, we'd come down in front of you for a benefit or a fundraiser or some other kind of thing, we would do that, but we don't want to look forward to anything else than four to seven on Sunday for now.
I have a question for our police chief. Does the department have a sound level meter? I know a lot of departments do, just mainly to deal with motorcycles, but...
We don't, but we can access one. Okay, cool. I mean, it's, you know, if we can have, you know, a band in there on a Sunday, have the decimal reader come down, go outside the building, go all around, find what's reasonable for everybody to live with. You know, I spoke to the person in the other day and the music that we had for our third anniversary was fine. He said it was acceptable. I don't know who, he mentioned that he spoke to somebody, selectmen on the board, I'm not sure who, but I guess it's all I really have. I mean, it's...
Greg, not to put you on the spot, but we, give us a little bit of a stipulative definition because when the rubber hits the road and we ask for a motion, it might be a little easier. I heard the word band. I have heard the word vocalist. I've heard the word no percussion. I've heard two people. What exactly are you going to ask for?
If I have a guy come in playing a piano, which I had, like the two guys I had for the anniversary, two guys playing guitars, one guy was playing a bucket and it was amped and it was fine. Then I can have a keyboard guy come in and with an amp and play his stuff, or I could have a guy playing harmonica, a guy playing guitar, a guy playing the bucket. It's, it's, you can't put a finger on what you're going to have for entertainment. If it's about noise, because that's what it's boiled down to, is the noise. What is acceptable, what is not acceptable?
But I mean, remember, and I'm going to ask for comment out of the, remember the request is for unamped music.
I guess by law I'm allowed to have thirty times a year. I don't really know the whole, how it all works out or what it is or what it's not, but if you come down and watch a Bruins game on a, at nighttime and the loud, you can't hear. So what is amped or not amped? Is my playing the radio too loud? Is that amped or not amped? Is it about the noise level that's coming out of the building or not?
Would anyone from the board like to make a motion and then we'll have discussion?
Yeah, a motion, oh.
Well, actually, we actually, this is a continued discussion of something that was already...
An offer.
Yeah, this was moved forward from our last meeting, so we've already, we're in discussion phase already that we had the original motion.
What did we decide? We just tabled it?
No, we made specific requests, I think, let me pull it back. It's in the minutes, I think.
Yep.
The dates and a better explanation of the nature of the music, I guess, was the two items that we were looking for at the last meeting. So, you know, the request was for, from us, was a revamped request that included these two items.
So would you, so if I could go for non-amped, that'd be fine, or I?
Well, I think what David said, Dave, you might have to say it just a little louder because he didn't hear the...
Yeah, I'm sorry, my voice is failing me again tonight.
Pull it right in there.
But unfortunately, the microphone doesn't help you over there.
He did amped.
Yeah.
Wow.
I'm just reading from the minutes of the last meeting and the...
I wasn't able to entertain, I apologize for that.
And losing it now, but I don't have, I'm not finding the exact wording right off the bat, but I just read it a few minutes ago and the request was for, to you, was for a revamped request, specifying specific dates and giving us more information about the music, I think was the paraphrase that...
And that's why I asked you in the beginning if you had written a new request, because that's kind of what we tabled it for in lieu of you coming in with.
It's, I guess it's, I don't really know how to, to ask you, what I'm asking you is basically it's about the noise level coming out of the building. That's what it boils down to.
Well, there was the dates too, because there was an open-ended request.
I think we've kind of got, I mean, in my mind, we've gotten past that. We haven't had music since the third, you know, the third we had it and then, I mean, for the anniversary and it's gotten to a point where it's...
Can you pick some dates?
Pick some dates?
Yeah, no, that was one of the requests was...
Sundays to the end of October.
Yeah, because it was Sundays without any specification, because Sundays from now into eternity.
If it's thirty, I'll keep it within the thirty perimeter for, or here till October, November. I mean, it is a, it is a, you know, I look at it because my business relies on weather. And whether or not the weather is good or bad, this Sunday was not very good. Would music have definitely helped us? Yes, it would have. Is it four to seven where it's, you can come in with your family with, I mean, I'm sitting around and I see my, we got two three-year-old kids dancing on the floor and it's not on the floor, but you know what I mean? It's just a family.
Here's your Sunday dates.
I mean, if I can have it through October would be great. And if, every Sunday, if I'm under a microscope, come on down. See what it's like.
Okay. So what you're proposing, again, just focusing on dates for now, would be, say, until November first?
Yeah.
Anna, go ahead.
When we'd spoken earlier, I thought one of your concerns was that during the winter it's harder to get people out to the island, so you wanted to be able to have entertainment through some of the winter months.
Correct.
So thirty solo days can get you well beyond November. Do you want, I just don't want to approve the license and have you then come back and say, well, actually I need a different one.
I'm just taking anything I can get right now and it's just, maybe I should be more specific. You know, it's, is it thirty that I can get? Then I'll take it throughs, I mean, until the beginning of the, I don't really know. I'm asking so much, but it's... Twenty-three Sundays to the end of the year, we'll come back again.
How many of you used up this year already? No, I really, this thirty number, I don't even know where that came from, to tell you the truth.
Sam, that comes, is that thirty from, what do we got here?
The thirty is actually getting mixed with the liquor license limitations. And a lot of cities and towns will carry that thirty-day liquor license and apply that to an entertainment license as they sometimes coincide. We don't have any such bylaw, so it's truly at the discretion of selectmen, whether it's thirty or three hundred. The only thing I will caution, and I was talking to Damon earlier, is dealing with entertainment in a restaurant that serves alcohol is meeting a threshold to be considered nightclub. And me and Greg have talked about this extensively. You know, do I think a guy with a harmonica is going to make a nightclub atmosphere? No. Do I think a full band? Possibly. And just on the town side, being careful, dependent on what type of entertainment we're having that night, to take appropriate provisions or precautions to ensure that we don't assume liability that we really shouldn't assume for the taxpayers. So, you know, if they're going to have something, an anniversary event where they are going to have a band, discuss with the fire chief and police chief, get the sign-offs, and if that means having a detail down there or training folks as crowd control managers. You know, it's a twenty-minute free online type of training where they monitor people in and out. There's ways to monitor based on that level of entertainment that I think would accommodate the Beach Comer as well as cover ourselves with not overextending the selectmen's authority and putting us in some potential liability issues.
David, does that give you any clarification?
I think we ought to pick a date.
Not set on any particular date and partly also just to get some comfort level. And again, is it unamped, amped? You know, these two in my mind kind of...
Is it a noise? See, the amped and the, I mean, you can have unamped, two guys. Or, you know, I was in the restaurant the other night and it was just, the game was on, it was so loud, you couldn't hear yourself think in there without any music.
Yep.
Is it, is it amped or non-amped? Is it all about the noise, it's level that's going outside? Because that's what it, that's what, all I can understand is that's what it is. And if I can have a decimal reader outside or, just come down and hear it for yourself, is it a problem or is it not? I mean, I go outside when, for the anniversary thing, you couldn't hear anything. So that was amped.
Yeah, but as you know, there's a long history here and we've had complaints in the past...
That was a past restaurant from sixty years ago. We are a three-year-old place that, yes, I grant it, I understand, I get that.
Yeah, that's my concern only is really, you know, and my idea of perhaps having this be to a date certain as opposed to Sundays to eternity would be to get a little more experience so people get comfortable with what you're doing and so on and so forth, and then whatever date we pick for this approval, you know, whether it be the end of the year, November, I don't, that's not so important. I mean, just to get some experience, keep you going, because again, you know, we're trying to help all our small businesses down.
I really do, I understand, but if you, if we could have, you know, put us under a microscope every Sunday.
Okay.
I mean, and just, I mean, if we have the amped music and you come down or the police are called for some reason that it's too loud or, I mean, we'll have that decimal reading or some kind of a...
I appreciate your input on trying to appease us, but the major problem is the neighbors.
Well, that's what I'm saying. It's a decimal level.
They come over and complain to us, we have to act, okay? That's what, that's what this is all about.
I understand and I, and I'm trying to appease a couple of neighbors where the decimal level would come in, you know.
Well, to be honest, to be honest, Greg, too, I mean, Chuck is definitely right. This is kind of history. I mean, we're trying to work with you honestly now, so relax a little.
I know, I'm getting worked up.
But I just, hold on. Sam's concern, the town's concern is if you have a five-piece...
I won't.
Amped band in there, whether it meets the decimal and whether the neighbors can't hear it at all, we might reach a criteria of being a nightclub. I think that's what you're worried about, right, Sam? Or am I speaking for you? Where are we?
There's definitely two separate concerns, noise and then that meeting threshold to be classified differently under the building code, which again puts, puts some pressures on the town as far as our controls on what happens within our borders. You know, and that's a tough, I called the state on this and they don't have any clear guidelines as to what that is. So it's kind of the guess what I'm thinking. And typically that happens when, when there's a tragedy. You know, at that point, that's when you put on the microscope and people want to know, was it or wasn't it? And depending on your judges at that point is where you come up with. There's tons of restaurants out there that have people that walk around with instruments, that have a piano player, that have different things going on that are certainly entertainment, which is what the code brings up, is that, you know, you serve food, you serve alcohol, you know, it's got relatively dim lighting, you know. You meet that criteria. You know, so now, now the question is being put on you guys or either you and police and fire to determine when we tip that threshold from ambience in a restaurant to entertainment in a nightclub. And I think it's, you know, it's a tough call. If I have a guy playing a piano, you know, this was an example I used and I mean, it's a little over-exaggerating. If you get this down there, give me a call, but, you know, a guy on a piano that's just playing is ambiance. You get Billy Joel on the piano, you get a whole different crowd. And I mean, again, not that I'm using an extreme, but the atmosphere mentality with a live band versus, you know, something smaller changes. The other issue is when we start getting it to amplified music, one of the concerns that the code has is tying that amplification system in so that if the smoke detectors or an alarm goes off, it immediately cuts the amplification. Which again, I think we can work with them as far as, you know, Sunday nights four to seven is not prime party time. Let's face it, that's not, it's not your one and two in the morning party. So I think that's, that's right there, that timeframe helps us out quite a bit in making that argument. Again, making the staff crowd control managers. Plum Island Grill did it just as good practice. And then they got the sprinkler systems and, you know, so they've got that done. Again, it's a free training. It's basically someone's responsible at the beginning of shift. Make sure doors open, close, your egresses, the signs are lit, the alarms are, you know, nothing's, nothing's out of place in that you don't get overcrowded. So I think in this case, again, with a limited number of hours, what is with putting those stipulations on, we can certainly come to a common sense decision as to, is it performing as a nightclub? You know, does it have that, that vibe, that feeling? I think in most cases, probably not, but if we have things like, you know, a band in there that's amplified, it may be something that we want to just touch base with, you know, prior to them going in, touch base with fire and police and just say, hey, this weekend I'm having this type of entertainment. Do you need anything extra from me? You know, and maybe it's as simple as that, you know, depending on the level of recognition of the entertainment, the the type that it is, the type of crowd that it would attract, you know, may give everyone the comfort that, okay, you know what? He doesn't know what he's having in this week, maybe, you know, for the week after next, he's booked someone, can go to the fire and police and say, okay, here's what we have. I've trained everyone again as crowd control managers. I think wiring the amplification system to cut out when the alarm goes is very inexpensive. It's, you know, it's a simple kill switch. One activates, it kills the other. Other than that, you know, it's a fairly safe place. It's got plenty of egresses, it's got open doors. You know, watching the occupancy is certainly going to be key. You start going over, that gets us into real scary territory where we're talking about sprinklering. And it just, that makes a mess out of things. We've talked about that as well. So, you know, and if it's, gives the selectmen comfort to give a short-term trial and then revisit it, I think that at least might be a good start to, you know, get the ball rolling. As far as the noise goes, that, you know, I can't help you there, but the code section, that's what I have to offer. Again, I'm not deeply concerned about the way the operation functions. My concern is the language in the code and our liability within that language, because it is very vague. The state doesn't, kind of a case by case. So as long as we're doing our due diligence to ensure that we don't just say, yeah, go ahead, that we've had some provisions put in place that, you know, address those code concerns, I think we're in good shape.
So maybe let's just reiterate a little bit, if Greg were to have a written request, it might state that it is four to Sunday, which isn't on prime time, and you are going to get some of the folks in your operation, crowd control, educated and trained. And if it's going to be a little larger operation, you're going to call the fire department?
I mean, I'm just going to try to keep it as very low-key.
And the other thing that Sam was asking about for the sake of everyone, maybe to put in the form of a motion, would be that the amps were wired to go out or something.
Jeff, we do have a motion on the table from the June meeting.
Unamped, correct.
So the original request was Sundays, was it four to seven, I think, but Sundays without an end date. And I think I...
If that's the case, go through, like I said, put me under the microscope, put me onto the, you know, we have like till January first or so.
Okay. So I propose to amend the original motion to probably insert after Sundays until January first.
The sake of what I kind of stated those things for, I had nothing to do with the prior motion, it was the fact that do we need to amend the prior motion to maybe include some of those?
I'm proposing one amendment, you're free to... I'm proposing one amendment, you're free to propose other amendments.
I can add amendment.
Amendment, so we vote on the amendments, and then we can go back to more amendments if we want them.
We've been kicking us around a bit.
Yeah. I would like to, really, I really like to get you moving forward on this, even though we still have some outstanding concerns.
All right, so we have an amendment to what, again, what was it guys?
The original motion back in June, and part of the trouble is, all's I've got to go on is the minutes, I don't even have the original request, because we've lost a lot of information that used to be in Dropbox. So, your original request was Sundays without any dates specified.
Well, I'm just trying to work with the board and just trying to.
But again, we, we, just procedurally, we have a motion on the table from June that we have to deal with, and so that motion was to approve your request. And I don't remember all the details of the request, but it was Sundays, was it four to seven? Four to seven.
Acoustic music.
Acoustic music, that was the original request, is that? Unfortunately, we don't have it online anymore for some reason.
So if I understand.
So if that's, if that's, now. I'm, 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 so I've been making an amendment just to end at January one. But then we may want to add other amendments related to the type of music or other factors, but since we have an amendment that's been seconded, I think we got to vote on this amendment procedurally, and then go back to the overall request, procedurally.
Is there a second on that amendment?
It's been seconded.
It's been seconded.
Okay, you seconded it?
I did.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So that's just, the amendment was just till January first, is that, or was it the other stuff you're talking about?
No, the amendment, the amendment was for the date for unamped music.
Unamped music.
Yeah, so now the question is, amped versus unamped?
No, I'm for it.
No, did you say opposed?
Oh, opposed. Sorry Mike.
All right.
All right, now, should we make a motion to include Sam's?
It's up to you guys, you know. But if you're going to make some of these.
I will go through.
motions, you're talking about amped music.
Yeah.
So, that's where it gets kind of sticky.
I think we'll leave it just as it lies. Well, yeah, I guess we can leave it where it lies. I think it, it would behoove you to do the, the crowd control training regardless of the application.
Correct, that should be, I agree.
But I think, I'd like to move to vote on this and go from there.
Is there a second? Including the amendment?
Well, at this point, you're basically saying move the article, right?
That's what Damon asked.
I'm okay with that.
All right, that's a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
So we're voting on the whole article now.
As you amended it.
Yeah, as amended. Okay, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Chuck?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. Did you understand what you have?
I'm not a hell of a party, no. I'm kidding.
All right. I will try to articulate what you have, and Damon and everyone else tell me if I'm wrong. It seems that you have an unamped request, unamped, acoustical, and what was the date, David?
January one.
Till January one, and that's been approved.
Four to seven.
Four to, four to seven on Sundays, your original request. And your original request, I guess, was unamped, so that's what we're going on.
Okay.
So.
We have it written right here.
And at another time, you can come back and, you know, maybe try to change that, but that's what you got tonight.
If I wanted to get it amped, I have to come back again, and we'll try that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And this is a good trial period, and run with it, so.
Sounds good.
All right.
Thank you very much.
So are you saying he cannot come back and watch to January first?
No, he can come back anytime he wants.
No, no, I mean, he'd come back anytime he wants.
Yes.
So.
We can't deny him that.
But you're not going to grant him that now? I'm not clear on why that is. Or just, I'm just not clear on the process, does he have to have it in writing, is that what you're saying?
We had a, a, something on, from last month.
It's actually June, I think, wasn't it? Was it June, maybe it was July, yeah.
I've tabled it in July.
That's right, yeah.
It may have been from June, I don't know, because I was not at that meeting. But we have to deal with the application that we have, which is for unamped.
So you wanted to make another application?
Yeah, if he wants to go forward with the, with amped music, he'd need to come back with
formal application to you.
That application.
Jen, where some of the complication arose, and it's okay Greg, on your part, but part of the reason this got tabled is we didn't have a written formal request.
You were told it was big, I remember that.
All right, so, and we didn't seem to be that much further along tonight.
I just didn't understand the process, so he needs to formally, he's here tonight.
Yep.
What you're saying is that's not good enough, he needs to, as the process goes, he needs to formally reapply.
For amped music, yeah.
Can you amend the motion?
I'm sorry, it's been passed.
Yeah.
And we don't have, it's not, we don't have a request on the agenda for, for tonight.
Well, it takes two weeks for me to put it in true, so anything I would have given you in the last week wouldn't have mattered anyway.
Yeah.
Right?
Say it again.
Just, just for sake of argument, how many people were in favor of this tonight, raise your hands? Just, just for curious, Jen, get a count, get a count.
Well, is there anyone who was against it?
That's easier.
All right.
I have a question for you.
Go ahead, I'll recognize you, go ahead. Go ahead, come to the microphone.
I sing, I've sang at the Beach Coma before. If I am unamped, no one hears me except Greg. So does that mean that if Greg decides to ask me to come back to sing, I cannot use a microphone? I mean, I'm sure that you folks have had trouble hearing some of the people up here.
Can't hear them at all.
Can't hear them at all.
So, and say, I'm playing with a man who plays a fiddle, or a bass. A fiddle might carry, a bass, you don't hear unless it's plugged in. The keyboard, you can't hear it, it doesn't have any sound unless it's plugged in. So I'm not sure unamped covers much of anything.
Whether you can hear it inside the Beach Coma, the problem is how badly you hear it outside the Beach Coma. That's why we're here.
I understand that.
So, let's get that squared, all right?
Right, but if you're going to hear music and you can't hear it in the Beach Coma or out of the Beach Coma.
I tend to doubt that. I would have to be there and witness.
Okay, point of order, Mr. Chairman, point of order. We've voted, we've got other things on the agenda, there'll be other opportunities to.
I just wish that you all would come down here on a Sunday and just once try it out for yourself before you say no to anything. That's all.
Greg, you, thank you. Greg, you're a lot further ahead than you were, and do make another request. Thanks. Is Steve Fram here tonight?
He stopped in earlier this evening and said he was not going to be able to make the meeting this evening, but, you know, and apologized, but said he, he would like to seek.
Okay, Steve Fram has written a letter to us, and he has a request to be appointed to a position on the municipal building committee.
Jeff, can you get, tell people to quiet, move outside, I can't.
Sam, can you close the doors?
Yes, there is. All right. Can we approve this this evening?
Yeah.
Yeah, Steve has sent us a letter to ask for a position, and he would fill what we talked about earlier, which would be the Byfield position, and can I entertain a motion to put Steve Fram on the municipal building committee? Any discussion?
Just one minor point, and that is that, as I mentioned earlier, I'd really like to see people who aren't affiliated with town government fill these last three slots. You know, Steve's certainly been in Byfield, but he's also been involved, you know, in Board of Health and so on, so that'd be the only concern that I would have, I mean, otherwise, I think.
We've put the request out at the last couple of selectmen's meetings, it's on our website, and I believe Jen's reported it as well, and we haven't had anyone come forward.
Quite honestly, a lot of things you tell me are on the town website, I have a very hard time finding, not necessarily that one in particular, but just in general.
Right along the side.
Two things that have been mentioned to me today about the foxes, for example, and one other item, I just looked at the town website, they're not obvious, I didn't find them right off the bat, so.
They better not be on there Dave. They better not be on there.
I don't know, I just, as I said, that's a very minor concern on my part, I just.
There's a motion before us, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those against? One-day liquor license for protection, two. Friday, August fifteenth, Kathy, is everything in order?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. One-day liquor license for Richard Domenico, for the event at SPL, for Spinn, I mean, for Spencer Little Farm, on Sunday, August second, from two to nine thirty.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. One-day liquor license for sticky molasses for a wedding at Spencer Pierce Little Farm on August twenty-third, from four to nine thirty PM. Entertain a motion, Kathy, everything in order?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have some appointment renewals that we didn't really get on last meeting. The appointment renewals are for the recreational committee for Rebecca DeKeeson, and she has been a member for quite a while on that. So, I would entertain a motion to.
Let me run right through them, and then if there's any hold, run a hold, and then we'll approve all in one slow.
What is it, there's only, there's only two, so we'll do them both together then. And the other one is, Tim Leonard, for Police Deputy Emergency Management Director. And so like Chuck said, we're going to vote to make a motion.
Motion to approve all.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any against? This is the discussion we've had before, it's a refund of a commercial clamming license fee to David Foley, who is deceased. It has been recommended by the Fish Commissioners, I'd like a motion.
Motion to approve the refund.
Second.
All those in favor, any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone against? We have the minutes before us of six seventeen and seven fourteen. I think everyone was here for the June meeting.
I was not.
You weren't, oh yeah, you were traveling, and then David, I think you were missing on the other one, so.
No, actually, it was.
Were you, were you here that day?
I'm losing track of which one I was at, I was missing.
That's what I meant, the, the, July fourteenth, you weren't, were you?
That's.
I looked them over, I did not see any errors or omissions, motion to approve.
Are we approving June seventeenth, or are we approving both? Did you say seventeen, Chuck?
I was going to do the one.
Yep, all right, June seventeenth, yep. Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to the July fourteenth, Walker Bearbulgaris Jespersen, for some of the town transfers. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve is read.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
This was July?
This was the fourteenth, July fourteenth, that was that meeting at nine thirty in the morning, I think.
Yeah, I, I was not at that one.
Yep, I know that, yep. This is the new conservation restriction for Marsh Meadow subdivision due. We didn't sign that before, this is.
We did sign it.
Yeah, that'd be great, thanks Martha.
This is the final step in closing out the Marsh Meadow subdivision for the Jespersens. And the conservation restriction went through the Conservation Commission and the Board of Selectmen previously, it then needed to be signed by the state. The state picked up the fact, or had an issue with the fact that Elena Jespersen's signature and the notary signature didn't have the same date. And so they, they kicked it back. And, so anyway, the planning board did, did get it back and recommended that it go through the process again, and it's really just a technicality, so that the project can be closed out.
Motion to sign? So moved. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have communications tonight, we have a letter of thanks, and the letter of thanks thanks a lot of different people. It is from the Byfield Community Arts Center, and it is thanking people for the support they had from, for their recent Byfield Music and Arts Festival, thanks to Board of Selectmen, the Recreational Committee, Town Administrator Deputy John Lucius. So they just wanted to thank us and everyone for being part of it. There's one more piece of communication that might not be on the agenda, but we talked about it at the last meeting, and that is sending that citation, because they have chosen, in fact, we have, we have the king. They have chosen the king and queen for Yankee Homecoming, and we were going to send a citation, Kathy, now that we have the names. So if we could do that, that would be great. Huh? Yeah, were you both, or was one from Newburyport, too? Was, yeah, so it's great. I will entertain a motion.
Well, we've got to go back to the demolition delay ballot.
Oh geez, that's right, too.
Channing's been waiting patiently.
I should try to get rid of you. Mine too. Did you get that in front of you, Dave? Yeah, did you get through it at all?
Okay.
Read every last word.
Yeah.
Passed my hands over it.
What do you, what do you got for concerns, Mr. Mountain?
I just wanted to have Channing just.
Channing Howard, Chairman of Historical Commission, sixty-one Central Street in Byfield. I'd like to also introduce to the board Nancy Thurlow, Lon, you've met, and Jan Forrest are all members of the Historical Commission now.
Thank you for all your input.
And my clerk, my clerk and paper man is away, so I do not have color photo giant green flow sheets with flags on them and stuff, so Chris is away, he's the clerk of the committee. So he is the one who handles all this melting and preparation, so I'm going to fly by the seat of my pants tonight.
I was just going to say, what I was mainly interested in is, you know, we saw an earlier version of this, and just.
Your question, the earlier version versus the version before you tonight. To my knowledge, the important notes between this winter and the final one in front of you tonight is the time period and the date. With the recommendations of the planning board, they wanted to see a longer time period, we were at six months and seventeen ninety-nine. And both the time period and the date with the recommendations of the planning board, they would like to see longer and later. So we have met them halfway, they wanted to see twelve months. We thought that twelve-month period delay was on the long side. Most towns are running between six and twelve. So we drew the line in the middle, we went with nine. And with that, if after six months, the board and the commissioner are satisfied that everything has been exhausted, and there is just pointless wasted ti, time wasting away, holding up property owner, after six months, permit can be granted immediately. And as far as the date goes, the planning board wanted us to see, go to an end of an architectural period, so that's where we moved from seventeen ninety to eighteen twenty. And that is, that is the thought behind that. It's communication from town council was legal jargon, typos, words, et cetera. There was no changes of format, et cetera. Building, Commissioner Sam sent us a report back as far as what he wanted to see in there, he had some questions. We reviewed them all, implemented improvements and changes on his behalf. Planning board, Martha came to. and changes on his behalf. Planning board, Martha came to our meeting, and we did speak with her and did get a list of communications from the planning board, that was also blended in and brought into the new edition. And that brings us, that was, that is all the communication from the other boards except for your board, and we're before you tonight to present to you the finished product. Like I said before, the mission tonight is to go forward with the hearings, go forward with the fall town meeting, and get permission to make this public, three things tonight. We're not asking you to approve this or even put it on the town meeting tonight, because I know you all have to read it. What we do want is permission to make this public, put it on our website, circulate it, and have permission to give, schedule the two hearings. One on a Wednesday, one on a Saturday day.
All right, motion for the two hearings and to make public.
Well, actually, I think formally, isn't the process that we refer it back, is this like the, with the planning board, okay, so.
It's not, it's a town bylaw, so it's the selectmen.
Yep.
It doesn't even really need a public hearing.
I think it's a good idea.
But it's a good idea to have some workshops.
Right, I just want to understand what we were doing. Okay, so Chuck, go ahead.
I'll second it.
Wait a minute, okay. So the motion, the motion was to hold two public hearings, is that?
Yep.
Okay.
Want one?
No, I just want to understand what the motion was.
For the two public hearings and to make public. That was his request.
Yeah, it's-
So I'm just putting into words what he's asking.
And Martha, technically, would these be public hearings or are they more like workshops, because-
It's workshops, it doesn't really look like a public hearing per se, you know, it doesn't-
Yeah, there's a different legal process there, that's why I wanted to, so they'd be workshops really, not public.
Any further discussion?
Just one question, something that's a hot topic in the planning, in the preservation community, and I know it's a really tough one to deal with, but so-called demolition by neglect.
It is covered in here, I can't recite it at this point. The homeowner does have to see, I do believe it says in there that they do have to maintain the building, if it has wide open windows, they have to put plywood over them. I don't have it memorized.
But that's after, this has been triggered, after the delays-
Once the property is considered a significant structure and preferably preserved, and it's on the clock for 90 days.
Yeah. Now, what I'm talking about is someone who does not go through the demolition delay process. In order to bypass it, it's not unknown that people will just let a building deliberately run downhill to get declared a, you know, uninhabitable, and the building inspector-
This is asked, this is asking for a building permit.
Yeah.
So they, if they haven't asked for a building permit, we don't do any, it does not involve us.
It's a, it's a hard problem, I know, I understand that.
Yeah, we, no, we cannot take any action until they've come in to Sam and asked for a, and people go, it's not a building permit. But it is actually a building permit to tear down a building. So that's the word on that. So, no, if they have not applied for a permit, it does not involve any of us.
Hey, thanks.
All those in favor of Chuck's motion and seconded by Damon? Say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Thank you.
All right. Channing, thank you for waiting, appreciate that. Thank you all for putting up with this whole.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
You know, before we, before we break, can I-
Hold on, guys.
Got a big stack in front of you.
Start on the agenda.
Start them somewhere else.
I'd like to publicly-
We're still going, guys.
Okay.
Yep.
I'd like to publicly commend Chief Riley and our police department for the way they handled the investigation of Plum Island. And I'm not going to go into detail, but I just think they did a great job, they held their ground with all the pressure they were under, and the case is going forward. And I just want to commend them, and I myself am very proud of our police-
I have to sign it?
All right, I can't even hear, that's the center of the table.
Thank you, thank you, Mike, and we have a motion to adjourn from Chuck, is it seconded? Was it seconded by Damon? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.